Thank you for participating in the City Government.
Whereas Pastor Rick Van Wagenen is commemorating his 25th anniversary as a pastor of the Family Christian Center. He is the founder and senior pastor. Along with his family, he inaugurated the Family Christian Center on October 15, 1993. He helped grow the Family Christian Center where approximately 3,000 people call it their home church. And whereas, he started Family Christian Center preschool for infants up to age four in 2004. This became the largest voluntary pre-K state-funded program in Lake County. He started Family Christian Center School for grades K-5 through 3 in 2010, added 4th through 11th grade in 2011, and added 12th grade in 2012. He opened a Sky Zone Indoor Chamois Park franchise on campus that is open to the community. And whereas, the entire community has benefited from the contributions made to include the implementation of the Snacks in the Sack Program that provides food for 1,000 children and feeds 1,000 families per month, with more than 70,000 pounds of food per year through the Center's food pantry. And whereas, Pastor Rick Van Wagenen has worked with the Community Foundation of South Lake County and has served two terms on Claremont's City Council from 2010 to 2014. And whereas, he served twice as president of the Foreign Ministerial Alliance of South Lake County. And whereas, the members of the Family Christian Center extended to him and his family their sincerest love and appreciation. They are proud to call him their pastor, leader, and friend, and join citizens in Lake County and beyond in thanking him for his 25 years of contributions and services, and look forward to his continued spiritual services for many years to come.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Claremont expresses its gratitude to Rick Van Wagenen for his service and many contributions to the Claremont community. In witness whereof, I hail Al Ash Mayor of the City of Claremont, and here I do set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Claremont to be affixed this 23rd day of October, 2018. The next item on the agenda, a presentation from the Florida Festival of Events Association. Their award and receiving that is going to be Mr. Davidoff.
Yes. And the mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Suzanne Eve and I am the CEO of the Florida Festival for Events Association. The live events in the street have a significant impact for our cities, driving tourism and spending, and we are thrilled to see cities like yours embracing the power of live events. And would like to congratulate the U.S.A. City for creating a sense of community through special events. The Florida Festival for Events Association celebrates the accomplishments of our members annually for the sensational awards program. For more than two decades, we have recognized the many talents of our members and distributed more than 1,800 awards to deserving event industry organizations and individuals. Event organizers like the ones you will see soon work hard all year releasing incredible events and programs that celebrate our communities and bring together neighbors. At our annual conference in August, I had the pleasure of announcing three awards for the City of Claremont's special events program in front of 300 industry leaders, and I'm thrilled to be here this evening to recognize those events and individuals who make them happen. The City of Claremont Earth Day Celebration, first place promotional item. Yeah. For Light Up Claremont, second place promotional mailer. And for the Claremont Cycle and Seek, third place promotional poster. Thank you to the City of Claremont event team for doing a fantastic job on your events all year round. Congratulations on these efforts.
Congratulations. It just proves that we've already known all along that we have the best staff in this whole area, certainly in Lake County. The next part of the agenda is public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council has three minutes to do so. And please give us your name and address before you speak.
Hi, good evening, council members. I am Mark Dodd, Lake County School Board District 3, 10-5-12 via Comma Hordes. I am here tonight in response to the Charter Schools site that was approved two weeks ago. Charter Schools USA and Public Speakers made a number of factual errors. Earlier today, you should have received a letter from the school district that seeks to clarify a number of points, but for your benefit and for that of the public, I'd like to share some of those highlights. First and foremost, we don't have students sitting on the floor. Claiming that we don't have enough desks and chairs for every student is dishonest and frankly insulting. You were told that this site was vetted by the school district, but that's also not true. By statute, the group simply has to name a site and can change it at any time. In fact, we felt like the site was inadequate, but we don't get to decide it. Our belief is that they chose the location because of its close proximity to three A-rated schools, a tactic to recruit high-performing students. In our professional opinion, five acres is not nearly enough space for 765 students. Compare that to neighboring Lost Lake Elementary's 22 acres, where lunch does not start at 9:45 a.m., it starts at 10:54. Secondly, Charter Schools USA failed to consider the five-year growth projections that take into account demographics, as well as other schools that have recently opened or will be opening next year. While we do have some capacity concerns in some places, the location of this school actually does not help us relieve them. They claim projects in the Four Corners area would not benefit Claremonts, but they will, because about 700 Windy Hill students live in Four Corners. That's literally half the school. Thirdly, Charter Schools USA grossly downplay the traffic impacts of this school. We know better, because here in Claremont Cypress Ridge is not served by buses. Even despite its lower enrollment and a car line dividing between two sides of the school, even we experience backups. Cypress Ridge relies on Claremont Middle's parking lot for events across the street, whereas this charter school will be forced to rely on the adjacent neighborhood. Working with this group was a challenge. They commonly denied agreeing to various concessions until we produced video recordings. The governing board's portfolio of schools suggests academic struggles. Half of their schools fail to earn a grade higher than a C, and during their interview, their board was actually unaware that one school earned three Ds in a row. The class-sized targets presented to you violate state law. They also touted financial benefits of their school over ours, but they didn't tell you that they pay a lease that never ends, whereas taxpayers own our schools and they can be used as a shelter during a storm because we follow SRF construction standards. We actually voted this application down twice because of these and so many other concerns, and we only approved it when we learned that we were unlikely to prevail in Tallahassee. This was one we voted for because we had to, not because we wanted to. We value our relationship with the City of Claremont, so we'd like to extend an invitation to discuss future schools with you before you approve them. We can ensure that you are basing your decision on accurate information, because like you, we only want the best schools in Claremont, and this group, I'm afraid, has fallen significantly short of our expectations. Thank you.
Mr. Rick, I'd actually like to ask a question about this. I apologize, I was not here at the last council meeting when this was voted in. Do we have an option here of revisiting this item? Because if we are talking about having made a decision based off of erroneous information, should we look at this again as a council and make sure that the decision that we are making is 100% what's best for the city and is based off of facts?
And I'm going to defer to Mr. Manzouris on this. I knew this would come up.
Unfortunately, you do not have an option to have this reheared at this point. In any way, this was not an approval of school, this is approval of conditional use permit. I know that's a slight distinction in what we're talking about here, but the conditional use permit process is a zoning-related process that requires a due process hearing based on advertised public hearings, and then has a remedy in the event that the applicant or any of the interested parties have a disagree with the decision in the City Council. We do not have a process to have a rehearing in it, but respectfully, without all sides having an opportunity to hear the discussion that you're having right now on an item that this information should have been presented during the hearing, puts this City Council in a very difficult position. Not only having to reconsider an item based on information that they should have had, maybe arguably two weeks ago, but also because the other side responded, who is, as you heard in the comments, the petitioner is not here to address this issue and they don't have any notice that it's being discussed. So that does put the Council in a very difficult situation.
Some of the information they did give was the basis of... Some of those council members that voted for it was erroneous, it was incorrect. The traffic study was based on a lesser number of...
Mr. Manzouris, respectfully, I don't want to interrupt you, but this matter is at a very new process, procedural place. Any individual that feels like the action taken by the City Council violated their rights or violated the law has a right to appeal. The Council really shouldn't be discussing this item at this point because it's not properly before you for a discussion on it. And I know you want to talk about the issues, and I understand that, given the fact that you just received this information, I think, today. But it is problematic from a procedure perspective and with regard to the process that we have to use, because this is, again, a zoning issue.
Hold the process.
You may very well...
Thank you very much.
My name is Danielle Page. I reside at 2422 Minkwood Avenue. I'm here tonight addressing an absolute irresponsible decision you made regarding the charter school. And to your city attorney, I was told by the city manager, Mr. Gray, that the only way you could rehear it outside of a court proceeding, sir, is if something was done procedurally wrong. In this instance, there was something done procedurally wrong. It was illegal what the charter school did. They changed their student capacity from 700 to 765 last minute. You know that they have to advertise two weeks prior to the meeting in order to... And that's just the process. They violated that process. Do you agree or not agree? That was procedurally done wrong. So based on that, I believe you all should be rehearing this matter. Despite the fact that it was all presented lies and not factual information, but they procedurally did something wrong. Out of the mouth of your own city manager, that's the only way you people can rehear this, is if something was procedurally done wrong. This was procedurally done wrong. And I guess you're not going to answer me, which means that yes, it was procedurally done wrong. Was it or was it not? Can you answer that, please, somebody? Are they not, or are they supposed to advertise two weeks prior to the meeting if they changed something, and they changed it last minute? They went from 700 students to 765. That's procedure, sir. Can you answer?
Mayor, it's like...
Anyone that answers me?
For purposes from mail...
Please. Let's be a champion for our children, Mr. and Ms. Mayor. Yeah, let's be a champion for our children.
Yes, I like to respond. If you will just give them a chance. No. Okay?
Typically, ma'am, as you know, we let individuals use their free manns and respond to the extent of the council's likelihood to respond. So we did this issue, did come up with a meeting, and we did talk about the issue related to it. The applicant did make a change and asked for a change to the number of students that would be in there. In our view, it was not a procedural issue that violated the advertising for this particular conditional use permit. It's meant to require the City's code with regard to advertising, and this did come up at the meeting, and there was discussion about it.
How do you figure that if somebody needs to change something last minute, they have to advertise it two weeks before? And you're just pulling this out of your hat now? Do you know who you let into the community, by the way? Specifically talking to Mayor Ash and Ms. Travis? Because you're a champion for our children. Do you know who you're letting in? You go onto Glassboard.com where there are 334 employee reviews of this company, Charter Schools USA. You will see they only gave a 2.9 stars out of 5. Here are the titles of their reviews. I can't even get into everything that they said. "Please go to public school." One person said, "Horrible." And you can look this up. I'm not pulling this out of my hat.
Excuse me, Mr. Page. Your time is up.
Time is up because you all are talking during my time. Is it because I'm touching on stuff that you don't want to deal with right now? Is it making you uncomfortable? Is it?
No.
Is it? Because the safety of my children are going to be involved in this. Okay, you can't remove me. There's case law. Thank you. Do what people as you like to read it. I'm sure you're city attorney. Thank you, ma'am. So if I may finish, I want to let you know who you're putting into our community. Once again, let me start over on that, because I was rudely interrupted, because it's something that you don't want to listen to, as everything else. A lot of these employees, like I said, made these reviews, and this is just their titles of the reviews. "For profit and not for people." "Absolutely miserable." One current employee on the Duval campus in Florida said, "Unbelievable on so many levels." "Lovely students, horrible administration. Run from this company." And then according to Indeed.com, where there are 155 more reviews from employees, and they got a rating of 2.7 out of 5 stars. Just five days ago, a worker that works for the aftercare there said, "This is the worst school system I have ever dealt with." That was just five days ago. She posted that. "Don't work here if you respect yourself." "There are very little hours and no materials to keep students occupied." "Bolt kids together because there aren't enough counselors." They can't even hire... They have 475 positions available right now because they cannot retain nor can they hire people for these schools. So what do we get? We get subpar teachers.
Mr. Manzouris, what is the situation? It's my understanding, according to our rules, that time limits may be set, or can be set, for speakers. Is there something that's different?
No, ma'am, there's not. The time rules aren't time limits for speakers.
That's because I'm making you uncomfortable, ma'am. Excuse me.
No, ma'am. And I remind the council again that you had a hearing on this matter. The decision was made. Respectfully, ma'am, to the extent you disagree with the decision, you have options to address that. But the council should not be rehearing matters that were held and decided.
But there was procedural things that were done wrong.
Because you and I disagree with that, disagree on that issue does not make you right. It doesn't make me right, but we disagree on that issue.
And your time is up.
I can only hope that you and Ms. Travis do not get reelected.
I'm all geared to dump that. Mary Greenwood, 1808 Nature Club Lane. I reviewed the audio tape from the October 9, 10 council meeting on the Charter Schools.
Could you speak closer to the microphone, please, for me?
I reviewed the audio from the October 9, 10 council meeting on the Charter Schools CUP. Everyone mentioned that those schools are overcrowded. I think you heard from Mr. Dowd, but that's not true. Mr. Bates, you said we need schools. Was this after you heard the comments from the parents outside the neighborhood in the advertisement shirts provided by Charter Schools USA? Ms. Travis, you spoke with the land use attorney and government consultant, and they discussed the overcrowding of the schools so you could get a better idea of what was going on in our city. Really? From them, not the schools or the residents? Mayor Ash, you stated numerous times that the schools are overcrowded, and I'd like to know where you're getting the information from. I didn't hear anyone say that they called Mark Dodd, District 3, or that you asked the school board for the five-year projection. I looked at the five-year projection today, and I don't think any of you did. Have any of the parents told you that they went to the school board with their concerns? I don't think so. Mayor, you didn't vote for the Imagine School because it was a charter school taking funds from a public school. How is this charter school any different from Imagine? Aren't you a champion for the children at public schools? The charter school plans to draw students from the elementary and middle school. How will they do this if they don't have busing? Mayor, you said that as long as people keep quiet, organizations just keep running, doing what they are doing. Well, guess what? We, the residents, are not going to keep quiet. Planning and zoning commission recommended denial. Finding of the proposed use didn't meet the general criteria for granting the request to the CUP. Like some GMPO indicated, several areas of concern is the applicant did not state when their school they would in or if they had after-school care, so the report submitted was inadequate. Here we are, the residents, asking you to step up and fix the problem, not make it worse. You're not champions of the children in this effort. You didn't ask pertinent questions of the applicant. Where are the parents supposed to park for back-to-school night for parent-teacher conferences? Will the off-duty sheriff direct all outbound traffic to 27 or Citrus Tower? We were told by the applicant at one of the information meetings that they were going to fill that property because it sits about six feet down from the street level on Steves, which means it's the fill. The land now is going to be at the top of the fence of the residents that were there in Tuscany Ridge. So where is the stormwater going to go? If the charter school were truly champions for the children, they would have looked at the available land on Excalibur and said, "Oh, no brainer. There's two schools there already. All the traffic is based on schools. Excalibur's a smart location and a safe location." We did not have a chance for rebuttal. The residents would have brought up all this information if we had a chance for rebuttal, but only the applicant had a chance for rebuttal. In this matter, you're not the champions of the children or the residents. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Yornell. I reside at 1375 Mystic Glen Lane in Claremont, Legends. And I believe Tracy may have handed out to you pictures that we had taken to the Honorable Mayor Ash and Honorable City Council members. I want to bring to your attention the golf properties gross neglect in the pictures I've taken yesterday. I've been in contact with Matt Roush and Catherine Neal from the City's Code Enforcement. They've been very professional and great to deal with. It is my hope that the new owner of the property, the golf course, will understand and comply with the city codes and ordinances and become a better steward of the property. Several hundred families have invested their life savings in these homes only to see the home's value plummet due to the owner's neglect. We purchased our home with a clear understanding that the restaurant, banquet facilities, liquor license, and golf course operations are intentionally intertwined. We respectfully ask you to keep these preconditions in place. I wish to thank you for your thoughtful consideration of our concerns. Thank you.
Mayor, just quickly on this issue, this matter is scheduled to go in front of the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate at the meeting on November 27.
It's on November 27. Could it be a good time for you, citizen residents of the community, to come?
Absolutely. I'm happy to be a special magistrate.
That says special magistrate here.
The Code Enforcement Special Magistrate.
What time would it be here?
Yeah, it's in the city hall.
And the time would be?
I think it's 1:30.
It's November 27?
Yes, 1:30.
1:30.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name's Vance Yocum. I'm actually here from Tiberius. I know Mr. Gray. He knows me. I've been writing a blog called FiscalRangers.com, which is a watchdog blog for 12 years in this county, but I barely come down here. However, this issue related towards the charter school has piqued my interest. But what I like to say is that I've been following several issues where different cities have ignored their rules. They've antagonized their residents with different things like this. And that's what I see here in this situation. And I'm kind of surprised that you guys aren't listening. Of course, I wasn't at the meeting. You don't make videos of your meetings, so people have to get the audio and listen to just that. By the way, that is one of my recommendations, is you should be making videos of these meetings, and they should be streamed, so the public can watch them. Eusis does it. Mount Dora does it. Bleesburg does it. There are some others that don't, but it's pretty easy. Mount Dora's been using just a cellphone with a live streaming on Facebook. On the school, I've attended most city and county board meetings, as well as the school district meetings. And I've been there with this firm, Charter Schools USA, which has got a board out of Tampa. And I confirmed that with one of the other school board members yesterday. They treated the school district very poorly. I mean, I almost swear they sent people, they hired off a Craigslist, to appear as board members at one of the meetings. And they ignored a lot of rules. They kept changing things. It couldn't be nailed down. And I think that the... I don't understand whether your policy isn't to research the background of some of these people they do with, but I'm really surprised that you went through that, and especially when the school district has so much angst about them and apparently no one reached out to them. I don't know. Maybe they talked at your meeting, but you overwrote them. But I think that you're still going to find issues because the next thing you're going to confront is the traffic on that road, because my understanding is entrance and exit are on that single two-lane road. And that's going to cause the next issue, because it's going to be all backed up, and you're going to have problems. And then the county is going to tell you, because I'm not sure if it's a city road or a county road. It's on city? Oh, okay. And they're going to be after you to widen that and to have mitigation factors unless you get the charter school to pay for that. But I'd really suggest that you find a way to go back and rethink this, because I think that you're going to have a problem. They clearly don't care about the planning for the school district because the school district has many studies that they do. They don't need more student seats up in your area. They need them down in the South, in the Four Corners area. And so what they're going to do, because they take state taxpayer money, they're going to give 95% of that that's going to flow through to them from the school district. And they're going to be siphoning students off of the existing schools that you have.
Your time is up.
And we have frozen cut. I'll be nice and I won't... Thank you very much, but I really think you need to rethink this. Find a way to do it. Yep.
All right. Seeing no one else at the microphone?
No, I'm turning out. I'm going to be someone else out, but I will take my time. If you know the case law before I speak tonight.
If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone.
My name is Charlene Harrison, 4939 West Southern Street. I want everybody in the hall to know tonight, including all of the council, that the mayor, and I don't know whether Mr. Manzouris was in on this. I have not got the clarification yet, that they have denied me to be on the public agenda. Anybody in this town could ever be on the public agenda. I sent a letter. Can you come up, Kirk, so we can put this up here? And I am not moving until I finish my thing, and I've already talked to Officer Hall back there. My family is four generations of law enforcement. And my grandfather was an acting sheriff, and I'm ready to be removed from here tonight. So that's where we're at. I'm going to skip everybody like the people here that didn't get to have a say. Mayor, I don't know if you're ever going to learn your lesson. Mayor, I don't guess you're ever going to learn your lesson. I don't guess. On September 21st, I gave the request, did I not, to you, Darren Gray, to be on it. I was asked to come down to City Hall, put my request in writing. I fulfilled all of the requirements that we've always had in this city. And then, I don't know if I even have it here, which it doesn't matter. Okay. Anyway, and so I didn't even get a response back. I called on Wednesday to Debbie, and I said, "I've heard nothing." I then called on Thursday. "You got to get ahold of Darren. I've heard nothing." Friday's coming up. Y'all get your packets delivered by the officers, do you not, on Friday? They knew on Wednesday, they knew on Thursday, and they knew on Friday. Since September 21st, no one even had the decency or courtesy to call me. Then I find out on Monday, because Darren had some personal issues going on, I was told that there was the triathlon down here. So that takes precedent over our citizens. And I was left to do nothing. Yeah, she's looking up there. Not going to happen. That being said, you're up for reelection, Mayor. Diane, I hope you're listening. You've done some good votes. You've listened to the people, and something was wrong. Then you came back with it. This, I have been up here three times on this issue. We got shut down in the middle of my husband here, and you had the officer come up here and tap him on the shoulders, which is deplorable, disgraceful. It wasn't because it's my husband. That's what's happening to people here. We had a mayor that was Hal Turble. You could call him every name in the book. That man would sit here and let you till you finished. He didn't care if it was 11 o'clock at night. You want to get out at 9:00? Go get you another job. You're in the wrong place. That being said, I asked to be on this agenda tonight. My husband is very ill, and I want you to listen very carefully. I tried to come here tonight to put one, fire one legal bullet to fix the problem down there because when you had your vote about the Montessori and about the hedge, they're at it again. They have totally ignored it, and I've tried to clean it up and fix it now. Let me get the best one that I can do here. And there's people in the audience letting me know I have the case law, where they tried to remove a man out of Riviera Beach. It's now in Supreme Court. It's been case law, and he won.
And your time is up, Mrs. Ford.
You want to put this up here?
Mayor, could we allow her?
No. Your time is up.
Y'all hear this? You can stop any council who wants to hear you.
Excuse me.
Do y'all hear that?
Do we understand that?
I just want to know succinctly, what did you want on the agenda?
I'll be glad to show you. I'll be glad.
Please don't discuss it with us.
You're not discussing. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Manzars, do your thing. Govern y'all self accordingly if nobody's gonna tell ya, I will. In case I do sue you. I came in here to give you the chance to fix this, so I didn't because I don't want to put my husband through a court case. But I will. I will go to the juggler vein and I will take anybody out legally that gets in my way. I've had enough of it. Nobody at City Hall has been able to stop them. They are violating their CUP again. They're turning right down there at the Montessori School. Had Nicole Garrett there and said, "Well, what do you want me to do?" Because I know he's like, keeps sending stuff and they do nothing. Mr. Manzars, you got an attorney there. Do something. Do something. You can write legal letters, you can take their CUP away. But you know what we want? This is my husband's grandparents' house. He grew up there and slept in the hundred-year-old bed that is in the house right now. We have never bothered anybody there. I came down here and I did the right thing. You see, there it is, folks. That has violated my rights. I called the ACLU. She had no right to do that. None. She's trying to stop me from being on there because she doesn't want to hear it. Either she doesn't like me. I don't know. Don't care. And if this is, y'all know I'm strong. If you're doing that to me, what do you think about the little person that comes in here? Or senior citizens? And they're bullied. And I will tell you a quote that I heard a long time ago. Hitler ruled with intimidation, fear, and murdering people. Mother Teresa could walk in a room and even a murderer, a terrorist, or a criminal would bow down. You don't rule with an iron fist, people. And when there's a person just like this gentleman here and other people, they said they're in the middle of men's citizens and she stops them. You know what? There's things that it takes more than three minutes. You've now made the meeting back at 6:30. So now you're taking the people out working. You've now gone it down to three minutes. Now y'all went along and I guess you got drank the Kool-Aid and you voted that she could try to do the Roberts Rules of Order? Well, I have them here. They're a guideline, they're not something to suppress. Freedom of speech. And I want you to go home and read that. Read it. I don't know if it went to your head. I don't know what's wrong with you, Gail. I don't know. Because I thought I used to know you. But you know what? This is America. And if you can't take the time to listen to these people that are your bosses, and y'all got some big heads here. But you know what? You work for us, not the other way around. Mr. Goodgame, while I have the chance, I want to apologize to you. Uh, this man has come in here, what people don't know, and I won't tell all of your business, but he has been battling an illness. He comes in here and shows up and he gets attacked by her. By her. When he tried to do something at his thing. And she knew that he was battling something. Thank you, sir, for coming down here. You know what? I didn't even like Rick Goodgame when I first met him. But you know what? I'll speak back. And I won't give you the word. So I'm done now. Excuse me. Please don't clap. Please don't, I'm done. Hopefully, I'm just one of my good friends. And I want y'all to take this and you either go swallow it or choke on it. I watched her on the third night she got elected in this hall. And it was Bob Wade from Bob Wade Ford that Wade Saunders was trying to railroad this man for a sign that he took down, which was the drive-in theater behind the McDonald's. And you know what? He went out and politicked and politicked against Hope Lamb. Remember this. She rared back and she said, "You know what? I'm gonna shock everybody here tonight. You worked day and night to keep me from electing, but you know what? We don't have the right to do this here. I was elected to do what is right. And this is wrong, what they're doing to you, Mr. Wade. And I won't go down that road. I got elected for the people." Maybe somebody, y'all can take that and put it in your book. Now. Now, I'm done. And you know what, Mr. Gray? You can meet with Mr. Manzars. You've already made a bad decision because you took away, you know, his rights and his freedom of speech. Two blocks down here, we got a ruling now in the books of the law. He's auto-vinced, so it's city of Claremont, that you took his, you know, rights away. Well, I don't think you want to go another round with the ACLU, Mr. Manzars, because I watched you in this court thing, or this hearing for my sons and for this one. This man knows the law because I got to watch him do it. And he's known it for ten years and didn't step up until now till my sons say he's suing y'all.
Next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Gray.
No report by the mayor.
Mr. Manzars?
No report by the mayor, thank you.
Really don't have any report, but I do want to personally thank Mr. Rick Bigwagner and the Family Christian Center for all of the work that's all been done over the years.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say a word or two about Rick Bigwagner. About six years ago, myself, Jack Wallace, who has now deceased, Richard Collins. We all met over at the Community Foundation. And we started a food drive. We went to Rick with our plans on how we would do it and how we would organize it. And on one Friday, we had over, his church had over 300 people, partially it's all from a Methodist church as well, over there sacking food for the school kids to take home for the weekend. It was the first food drive we had in Claremont. And he and his church played a vital, important role in that. And if you look at where we are today, we've got the school board pushing for food drives. And it's still working. The Methodist Church is still on board. Real Life Christian Church is on board. Church of South Lake is on board. FCC is on board. And we're supplying school kids with food every weekend. The Methodist Church does bills on wheels for the elderly people around the community. So we are doing our part in helping these kids over the weekends when they don't have food. So Rick played a very important role in this procedure, and I thank him very much.
No report by the mayor. I do apologize for missing on this one.
Mr. Tran.
Mr. Goodman. I competed in the Great Meridian Triathlon that was last Saturday. And we had so many good comments, how it was laid out in Victory Point. But I especially want to thank our police officers that did a great job keeping everybody safe at every intersection. If it wasn't for them, the event could not have been successful or safe. And I just want to say thank you very much. You make me feel really good to be part of this city. Thank you.
On October 11th, I visited Lost Lake Elementary School to meet with four classes of first graders and spoke to them about the city and about my job as mayor. It was great to be with the little ones again and to answer their questions. And today I received adorable little thank you cards from all the kids in the classes. That night, I attended a meeting of the Citizens Academy here at City Hall. The major presentation of the evening was by our finance director, Mr. Manzile. And he discussed different forms of revenue for the city and the different parts of the city budget. He was followed by our economic director, Ms. Schmidt, who discussed new businesses and developments in the city. On the morning of October 12th, I attended the Transportation Summit at the City Center. The main speaker was Ally Kelly, Executive Director of the Ray, who spoke about the latest technologies regarding driverless cars, car sharing, ride sharing, and how technology can be used to sustain development and innovation in roadway transportation. Following that meeting, I attended the opening of the Amish Pretzel Shop by the Epic Theater. After the ribbon-cutting, folks entered to try the delicious pretzels with great fillings and flavors. This is the first store for the young earth. They had previously sold their pretzels from a true food truck in a city, different cities in our area. Then later still that day, I attended a meeting of the Colonies Club in Kings Ridge and passed out sheets showing the latest businesses that have opened and discussed it with them. And it was a busy day for me. On the 15th, I attended the Thrive sponsored Teen Summit at the Arc. Police Chief Broadway and candidates for local and state positions spoke to the teens that were present. Each gave personal backgrounds and spoke about their plans for the seats they were seeking. On the 16th, I was at City Hall to meet with someone who had recently returned to Claremont and is going to be starting a business here and provided some background for things that have happened since they had last lived here. On the evening of the 17th, I attended the VIP opening of the new Home2 Suites. This new hotel has been designed for people that need a place for extended stays, not just one or two nights, and is great for athletes training in Claremont. The rooms are beautiful with lots of special amenities in the facility. The next morning, I met with the Homeless Task Force at the City Center. Discussion took place about the opening of the Woodwinds Apartments for those with low and moderate incomes and the plans for a similar apartment complex for seniors. There is a desperate need for such housing throughout our area. This problem leads back to the lack of workers for businesses that pay minimum wages. At 7:00 AM on Saturday, October 20th, I was at Victory Point for the start of the 20th Great Meridian Triathlon, which is organized and presented by Fred Summers. It was great to welcome everyone to our city, the choice of champions, and to wish them well in the race. About 1,000 athletes registered and participated in this event. What an amazing sight to see all the athletes gathered at the Laker Front. Later that morning, I held my coffee with the mayor at the Sun Creek Brewery on Mineola Avenue. I passed out showing, uh, sheets showing the recently opened businesses and those that will be coming and events that are going to be held in the months ahead. What made this coffee really extra special was that the finish line for the triathlon was right outside. So we got to see the runners as they crossed the finish lines. Lots of folks were there cheering the athletes on as they finished the race. My final event for the 20th, that day, was, excuse me, the annual banquet for the Caribbean American Association of Lake County. It was held at Gabby's on 27. Proceeds from this event go to a scholarship fund and supported steel ban. Yesterday, I attended the monthly meeting of the Lake Pocket Gas Board at the Winnebago. Focus was on the final fiscal year budget and contracts for new lines and new developments. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. These items are determined to be non-controversial. And if anyone in the audience thinks we should have a particular item pulled for discussion, please raise your hand and let me know what item number that would be. Seeing no one, I'll bring it to the council. And any council members wish consent items to be pulled for discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent items, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. The next is Unfinished Business, ordinance on 2018-35.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, providing for the annexation of a certain parcel plan in accordance with the NAR local service boundary agreement dated December 2nd, 2014, providing con efectivity, severability, recording, and publication.
And Mayor, just so you all know, this is just an introduction.
Move for introduction of ordinance 2018-35.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. Item number 10, ordinance number 2018-34.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, adopting a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment with the City of Claremont, Florida, pursuant to the Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act, Chapter 163, Part 2, Florida Statutes. Sending forth the authority for adoption of a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment. Sending forth the purpose and intent of a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment. Providing for the adoption of a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment. Establishing the legal status of a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment. Providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmember, sorry. For use of, again, a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment. The applicant, Olympus Sports Entertainment, has requested an amendment to the future land use map of the City of Claremont Comprehensive Plan. The City of Claremont Comprehensive Plan is a state-required document that defines the City of Claremont long-range intentions regarding the nature and direction for future development. What you see before you is the location map. This, this yellow line right in this area represents Highway 27. This is Lake Leesa. This is the site in question here of the Olympus Sports Entertainment. Just a bit closer view of it. It's a distinct orange red right now. This amendment, uh, excuse me. This amendment application is associated with an annexation and initial zoning application that had been filed with the city. Due to the required review by the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, for the amendment to the comprehensive plan, this application is being presented to the City Council to allow for transmittal to DEO to review and render its comments prior to a public hearing on the rezoning application. The initial zoning request to planning the development is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Council on December 11th, 2018. The applicant is requesting the city to designate a property with a future land use category as master plan development. The subject site is approximately 247 acres in size. The current future land use designation in the unincorporated Lake County is Wellness Way Area Plan Town Center and Wellness Way Area Plan 1. That's what you see here. This is the current county designation. Our proposal is master plan development. The applicant envisions a project that incorporates residential, commercial, office, sports performance venues, and open space and civic uses. The City of Claremont is the utility service provider for the subject property. The city has envisioned this area as the next generation of employment opportunities. Olympus is able to activate significant employment and economic opportunities for the city, state, and region. The applicant's request for a comprehensive plan amendment to master plan development category provides for a long-range designation for the use of the property and is not the detailed development approval. The future land use designation establishes a future character in urban form for the city in this area. Since the project is located within the city's joint planning area and ISBA boundary and the city can provide adequate public facilities and services, it is logical to support this future land use amendment. The project incorporates residential, commercial, office, sports and performance venues, open space, and civic uses. With this mix of uses, the most appropriate future land use category is in master plan development designation. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2018-34, the large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use from Lake County Wellness Way Area 1 and Town Center to the city's master plan development.
And so, Mayor, it comes just to remind you, this is just the transmittal to the state. The state will review this over the next 45 to 60 days. It will all come back to you in December with the comments from the state. So you will, we will have a water and sewer agreement. We will have a final annexation, the land use, and the zoning at that time and have a full public hearing on the process.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the transmittal of this plan? Seeing no one, bring it to council.
Move for approval of ordinance 2018-34. Move for transmittal, excuse me.
That's correct. Okay, it was seconded. All those in favor, if you see it by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. New business, Resolution Number 2018-11R.
A resolution of the City Council for the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, granting conditional use permit to allow for a structure occupying more than 5,000 square feet of floor space in the C1 Light Commercial Zoning District.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a mixed-use office building over 5,000 square feet in the C1 Light Commercial Zoning District. The Land Development Code, Section 122-201, requires a conditional use permit for an inspector over 5,000 square feet. The applicant's proposal is for an 11,333 square foot mixed-use commercial development with office and retail uses. The subject parcels are combined with, sorry, the subject parcels combined are approximately one acre in size for the future land use designation of commercial. Currently, there are two existing buildings on site that will be removed for the new development. So what you're looking at here for location-wise, this is Highway 50. Here, this is Citrus Tower Boulevard, Epple Street. This is location, there's two buildings on site right now that are red roofs here. The site is located south side of Highway 50, on the west side of Citrus Tower Boulevard. The project estimated will provide support off of Citrus Tower Boulevard. So this is the site of the two houses. In this right, in this area here is Citrus Tower Boulevard, and this is the access site, the proposed access to the site. The conceptual development, the development plan estimated will not require any variances to Land Development Code. The project is consistent and compatible with the surrounding areas. So what you have here, this represents the 11,333 square feet in access off of Citrus Tower. This is the parking lot. The way you see the site here, it does meet current code without any variances. We have provided, just a rendering conceptual plan from the view from Citrus Tower Boulevard. When evaluating your request for a conditional use permit, Section 86-144 of the Land Development Code requires specific development standards to be met. Staff has reviewed the CUP application estimated and finds the proposed use does meet the general criteria and will not be detrimental to health, safety, or general welfare of the persons residing or working in the vicinity. The commercial development will not be out of character with the surrounding properties and will be in harmony with the general intent of the Land Development Code. The proposed development is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Claremont Comprehensive Plan. And staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit, Resolution 2018-41R.
The applicant here. Staff can wish to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm David Clutz, professional engineer, project engineer, representing Moncler. And I'm available to answer any questions if you have.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this issue? Seeing no one, bring it to council.
Mr. Clutz, is there any one interested in tying a road to this development with one distant work in view? Through the internal portion of the project?
At this point, no, sir.
And I believe there's a huge elevation change between this property and the property to the south. Oh, you're talking about the property to the north, the offices?
Right. You're analyzing. Very. Because what it would do, it would allow the people exiting that northeast business to exit south, further south on Citrus Tower Boulevard. They would exit it right at, I mean, that's really close to that intersection they exited. And it would be very beneficial if that could be considered.
It's definitely something we could consider.
Anything else? Yep, someone with a question. Uh, and this is not to the applicant. What is the, I know that there's development going on in the south of this. What is that?
Those are the Mason Apartments.
Okay.
Addison, sorry, Addison Apartments.
I was just curious from a traffic perspective, sort of, to be backing off of what was served on. Mr. Gray, can you say anything about traffic patterns?
Lake County actually already put a curb path here. This is a designated intersection. Yes.
Any other questions?
I see you, there's a move for approval of Resolution Number 2018-41R.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. Thank you, good luck. Item number 12, Darius' request from Chick-fil-A.
Excuse me. The applicant, Chick-fil-A, is requesting a variance to allow the reduction of the required 30-foot special setback for accessory structure canopy as required by the Land Development Code 122-342. Parcel is currently under construction for the development of a 5,000-square-foot restaurant with a drive-through. The property is located at the southwest corner of Highway 27 and Hemming Ridge Road. That's what you see before you here. This is Highway 27, Hemming Ridge. This is right through the corner. And currently, the shell of the building is constructed. Site is approximately 1.67 acres and zone PUD with C1 permitted uses. In November of 2017, the City Council did deny the applicant's variance request to allow a 14-foot setback rather than the 30-foot required setback for a 44-foot by 26-foot canopy for the drive-through. The current request is to allow a 15-foot setback rather than the 30-foot required, again, for the same 44-by-26-foot canopy. The canopy is to protect the customers, employees, from the weather and elements of the drive-through. The applicant has indicated that the restaurant was designated to provide a more functional and safer drive-through that will deliver better vehicle circulation and stacking. Specifically, what you see is very lightly highlighted. This is the 44-by-26 canopy area here. Typically, per code, there's a 30-foot required setback from this property line down here. They're proposing 15. This right here, there's also retention fund to the south of the property that will provide a buffer which creates less impact on adjacent parcels. The proposed canopy layout, again, will be 15 feet from this property line. And that does include the required 10-foot landscape buffer that will be planted in this area. Section 86-174 of the Land Development Code requires a positive finding on the variance review criteria in order to grant a variance. Staff has reviewed the application estimated and find it does meet the positive finding on the requirements. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the variance request.
Does the applicant wish to address council?
Just for reference, this is what the proposed canopy will, it looks like. I believe the applicant has some additional renderings as well.
Good evening. Bill Fetter with Homie Consulting located at 13450 West Sunrise Boulevard, Sunrise, Florida. The engineer, Rick, on behalf of the applicant. Staff has always did a great job, did explain what the request was. So I'm here as well as the store operator to answer any questions if you guys have.
Anybody in the audience wish to discuss this issue?
I'll say something.
Come on up to the mic. And give us your name and date, name and address. I'm sorry, I almost said date of birth. No. Sorry. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Karen Hart. I'm at 3102 Anquilla Drive, Claremont, Florida. And I'm off for protecting people from the sun. But I'll be honest, that looks like a gas station. That's all I have to say.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Could look a little prettier for the caption.
Let me just, anyone else in the audience? I'll bring it to the council. I have a question. Where is this 10-foot buffer going to be? I'm assuming, no, put that picture back. Is this?
That's, yeah, that is.
Is that existing?
That is not.
That's from another location. That is not the canopy that you fixed.
That's why I was questioning the picture.
Yes, correct.
Okay, sorry. Just to be clear, what I just highlighted here is part of the landscape buffer on the south end of the project. Again, Highway 27 over to the right here.
So basically, between the landscape buffer and the canopy is five feet?
10-foot landscape buffer.
No. Between.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right. You're right, sorry. Between the buffer.
It has been a very confusing evening. Don't make it worse. It's 10-foot landscape buffer. To the canopy will be five feet from that landscape buffer.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay.
Is this in the same location that was presented a year ago?
Generally, it was shifted further, one foot away from the property line, an additional.
I mean, saying, okay.
But this is, this new location of the canopy has changed. Is that correct?
Slightly, within 12 inches each direction. So it's.
Oh, I thought it was at a different location.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, but I, but I, yes, it was, yeah, it was in this area, correct.
But you say there's a retention fund south of here.
There's nothing there, I mean, there's not.
So we've got the setback.
And we have the full landscape buffer along the public, right away to police community and public.
We'd have to see the layout, how it looks currently. I don't know that I'll see an issue with this. Is there a buffer on the east side? 127? I assume there is.
Yeah, 30-foot landscape buffer. They meet all of the other codes for the site.
I'd move for the approval of the variance request, second 12.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. Ordinance, good luck. Ordinance number 2018 dash 38.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending the City of Claremont Police Officers Pension Trust Fund as adopted by ordinance number 304 dash C, providing planned benefit revisions, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Move for introduction to ordinance 2018 dash 38.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. Leading the adjournments.